All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Before the start of this meeting tonight, the board met an executive session and we interviewed a nice gentleman, William Wirt, for a position on our bike and hike and we'll contemplate that appointment in a few minutes. We have an exciting presentation tonight, or a few presentations tonight, and I want everyone to know how important it is that not only do our residents participate in local government, in their local government, but that our young people be welcomed and encouraged to participate in their local government because this is where they live, this is where they play, this is where they're growing up. And we know that if our young people are participating, then so are their parents. And sometimes it's how, you know, the parents get to be involved is because the young, their young people are, you know, teaching them. We know that recycling got its start first from the elementary schools and then the parents caught on a few years later, but that's where it got its start. So the young folks, and there are a couple in the room tonight, have demonstrated their commitment to their community and in particular, two of them have created a video that won an award, statewide award. There are 1,450 townships of this size and this particular award created by Eli and his brother Carter Moore, won a statewide award for their presentation of roving reporters and they did a special on Kids Castle. So we're going to see that right now. Can we lower the lights, please, and bring on the video?
Hi, this is Carter Moore and this is Eli Moore, reporting for Doylestown TV. In the coming months, we'll be working together to do some special reporting for Doylestown TV. Our first story is about something at Doylestown that is very special to both of us. Kids Castle at Central Park.
Kids Castle was built 17 years ago by a group of volunteers in our community who thought our area needed a place where kids could play, get exercise, and use their imaginations.
Volunteers raised money, designed, and built the eight-story wooden Kids Castle structure.
The design was inspired by Henry Mercer's Font Hill Castle in Doylestown and was based on input from the area's schoolchildren.
Kids from all around our area enjoyed Kids Castle for many years, but about a year ago, it became clear that Kids Castle needed help. Many repairs were needed and without these repairs, the castle would have to be taken down.
Last spring, the castle closed and its future was uncertain.
Volunteers from the community stepped in and helped save Kids Castle.
They raised money and volunteered their time to help repair Kids Castle.
Volunteers washed and stained the castle, restored artwork, repaired broken items, and installed many new fun features.
Thanks to the hard work of so many people in our community, Kids Castle is now open again. Let's check it out.
The new and improved Kids Castle has been cleaned and stained. It has new roofing, decks, entrances, flooring, and artwork.
Two new, large racing twisty slides have been installed.
The grounds all around Kids Castle have been fixed up, too. This new specially engineered wood fiber was added to make the grounds as safe as possible.
Let's go inside. There are many fun ways to enter the castle. Climb the rock wall, climb the steps, or hop across the bridge.
There are safe, new cargo nets throughout the castle and lots of fun places to hide, like before.
While climbing the eight different levels of the castle, kids can enjoy great views to the area surrounding Central Park.
And then compete for the fastest escape down the twisty slides.
Oh yeah, that's awesome!
While exploring the castle, kids can use their imaginations to escape fire-breathing dragons or become part of the castle's royal family. They can run through one passageway and then escape down the fireman's pole. There's just so much to see, do, and explore at Kids Castle that kids never get bored there and they always have a lot of fun.
If you haven't checked out the newly restored Kids Castle, head over to Central Park to check it out, soon.
One more thing. The Friends of Kids Castle have plans to install more playground equipment for younger kids as well as handicap accessible pieces so the playground will be as inclusive as possible. To learn more, please visit the website, www.savekidscastle.org.
Okay now, enough talk. Let's go play. This has been Carter Moore and Eli Moore, reporting for Doylestown TV.
Oh my, that was just amazingly awesome. Carter and Eli, would you please come forward? On behalf of my board, this is your local government right here, and all the people in Doylestown Township, all the residents of this municipality, I am very proud to present to you these resolutions, and they're both, one for each of you, and it says Certificate of Appreciation. This is awarded to Eli Moore and you have one to Carter, in recognition and appreciation for your work on Kids Castle roving reporters video executed this day by myself and Stephanie Mason, our manager, and it's sealed with our township seal. Congratulations. You guys care to say anything? There you go. A thousand people have to listen to you.
Thank you very much for having this opportunity and thanks for entering us into the contest and it was really fun to do this.
Good. You're welcome.
As my brother said, thank you very much for entering us to this competition and I would like to thank very much to my mom for putting together and filming the video and it's a great honor to have this reward.
All right, stand by, we have another, very special. Emily Rennett is one of the junior members of our park board. She was interviewed and duly appointed and Emily is here tonight and she is receiving a certificate of recognition for her contribution of a video called "A Day in Doylestown Township." Roll it.
Instead of traveling far, look around. There are activities and things to do right near you. The Doylestown Township Park and Recreation System has indoor and outdoor facilities for everyone of all ages to enjoy. So get up, get active, and spend a day in Doylestown Township. To start off your day, let's check out one of the most peaceful areas in the town, at Castle Valley Park. Whether you have a passion for fishing or are just seeking tranquility, this is a park you've got to check out. This tract of nearly 3.8 acres offers a beautiful view. As part of the Nishamney Creek Watershed Rovers Conservation Project, 100 tree saplings and picnic benches lie in the stream bank. Waterfront steps, a nature trail, and education kiosks are placed around the park. In the afternoon, head to one of the most active parks in Doylestown, Central Park. Central Park is home to the new and improved Kids Castle. Since it was designed and named by children of Doylestown Township through an art contest in 1996, Kids Castle has been close to the heart of all children. As part of Phase 1 of reconstruction, the eight-story wooden playground structure now has six new entrances, rock climbing bridges, a fireman's pole, new flooring throughout the castle, and two large racing twisty slides. Artwork from local artists and groups has also been included. In addition to these new features, 400 cubic yards of specially engineered wood fibers have been added to the ground to make it as safe as possible. Upcoming phases and part of the Safe Kids Castle project include additional playground equipment for young children and handicap accessible pieces. But it doesn't stop there. You can find a variety of new facilities surrounding the castle for adults to enjoy as well. Around the park stands five tennis courts, two basketball courts, one toddler play area, three recreation fields, two bocce courts, a 21-station health check, and a senior station. Next up is Sowerman Park. Located off 611 and Sowerman Road, Sowerman Park is a heavily wooded 13-acre park of sloping ground. Natural drainage tributaries travel this site, creating intersecting terrain when walking the woodland areas. While easily accessible, Sowerman Park secludes itself from the hustle and bustle of everyday life. Park amenities include a softball field, a toddler play area, a horseshoe pit, a picnic area, and a woodland trail. For an evening of fun, let's head to the Turk Parks. Turk Park 1 is a six-acre park of gently sloping ground for active recreation and sports programs. The perimeter woodlands travel through a deep ravine that descends to the Nishamney Creek just upstream of the Bridgepoint Park area. It includes two recreation fields, one T-ball field, one football field, one swing set, and a woodland walk. To the right of Turk 1, you'll find Turk 2. It's 20 acres of bubble ground dedicated to active sports programs. The site is open and allows for an unobstructed view. Park amenities include three multipurpose fields, one volleyball court, two baseball fields, one toddler play area, and a fitness trail with exercise stations. Last but not least, there's Turk Park 3, home to the beloved Doylestown Dog Park. This membership facility is a closed park where dogs can play and interact. It includes half an acre for small dogs, one to half acres for large dogs, and one acre for educational events, training, and agility. The park also includes a shaded pavilion area, doggy water fountains, benches, and trees and shrubs for screening and shade. Close your day with a peaceful look around the environmental education area. This area behind Central Park not only provides education resources to the township, but also protects natural animals and habitats in the area. Learning stations like the invasive and alien species education area, Butterfly Habitat Garden, Outdoor Classroom, and Wetland Education Trail are placed around the running and biking path. At night, enjoy a fun-filled evening at the Sounds of Summer Concert Series. Here, you'll hear a range of music from high-energy contemporary country rock, to southern soul and blues, to disco. And don't forget, one of the best nights to kick off the summer, the Doylestown Township Fireworks Concert. There's a huge number of activities to do in your community, so get outside and breathe nature and get to know the area around you, one park at a time.
All right, be honest, how many people knew we had all of that in Doylestown Township? Come on. All right, Karen, you, you of course do. And members of our park board, thanks for being here. Emily, come on up. Thank you. On behalf of the board and everybody in Doylestown Township, your residents and your families and everybody else that know and love you, this is for you. For your contribution on video on the day of Doylestown Township, we're so pleased and so proud of your recognition. We can't thank you enough. Great things are coming your way, I know. Do you want to say anything to your public?
Your audience.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Especially thank you to Joe Salvati. He's helped me so much in the process of just producing this video and actually coming up with the idea in the first place to make a video that would showcase all that Doylestown has to offer. And also thank you to the whole Parks and Recreation Board for helping me with this project as well. Thank you, again.
Thanks, Emily. And park board, Paul, Bob, John, Jan, can you raise your hand? Thank you for being here tonight. Oh, yeah, there you go. All right, we have one more presentation before we start our ready-to-lead Conestoga Rovers. And the Moores and Rennett and, oh, and the young man next to you, can you please identify yourself real quick? Come on up here and tell us who you are. Because I think this is really cool. Who you are, where you work.
I am from Chalfont, which is, you know, right next door pretty much to Doylestown. Actually, I have some involvement in Doylestown Township. I mean, I go to, I've been to all those concerts and I go to Castle Park. My dad actually works on the recreation. He's a Doylestown Plow Snow, Chris Mason, if you know him. Anyway, so I'm here to support Emily and also about the theater that you guys are building, is that, or?
You can speak to that later if you want. Aren't you a member of your?
Yeah, I'm also a member of Chalfont, the Chalfont Council, I'm a junior council member for there, yes.
Excellent. Thank you for your work. Appreciate your service. Okay, now, Conestoga Rovers. I'm pleased to stay if you want, but you're welcome to leave if you have other things you got to do.
Hallmark.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Moore.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. All right, you can't possibly be any more interesting than what we've just had. Don't even try.
No, no, it's no exciting video here.
We'll cut it in half for you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rich Burns and this is Russ Mahalik. We're both from Conestoga Rovers and Associates. We're an environmental consulting firm working for the township. And we have a presentation tonight on the Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination Program, known as IDDE for short. Is this a click or two for this? There we go. As you can see, we've done this presentation here for several years. We've been doing work for the township since 2005. This is the agenda for tonight. We'll go over the current status of the program. We'll discuss the inspections and sampling we did in 2014, what we're going to do this year in 2015, and the takeaways and if you have any questions. Just to let you know real quick, we won't go into a lot of the background. We've done that in previous presentations. They're available on the website of the township. Basically, this is year 11 of the entire state program. Last year, in February, we spoke with DEP and they told us that they're still happy with how the township is managing their whole program. The township has submitted an application to extend their National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MPDS permit, which will take them to March 2018. We talked to the state about a month ago. They're still working on renewing that permit. It's, nothing's wrong with the application, it's just a slow thing with the whole state. And basically, this is kind of what we do as part of the MPDS program. It's the illicit discharge program. So basically, what Russ does here, once or twice a year, is we go out to all these outfalls in the township. And these are stormwater outfalls. And dry weather means, 72 hours or 40?
72 hours.
For 72 hours, no precipitation. Then he goes out to sample. So if we see flow, we're pretty sure it's not from a recent precipitation event, then it may be from an illicit discharge. You know, it could be typically a failing septic system, somebody emptying a pool, you know, anything that we might see. So we check, inspect the outflows, we look at color, odors, and we sample these outfalls as we go around the township. We've mapped well over 300 outfalls, at least. And there you can see a picture of one flow and one not having flow. And typically, we also go around and look at the catch basins. We've done this last couple of years to fully map all the outfalls in the township. We'll look down the catch basin and we'll see which way it goes. And typically, it's going to come out to an outfall at a stream or another catch basin and we have to mark those and label those. And the photo on the right, kind of hard to see with the glare there, but there's some flow and there's also suds, which is indicative of maybe a failing septic system or detergents, what we call gray water. This is a map of the entire township. We've broken it down to three areas. In the past few years, we've gone around and done full inspections and sampling one year at a time in each area. We've done that and we have a robust program now where we just go back each year and hit what we call the hotspots based on previous analytical data. And just to show you real quick, it's just that the areas are arbitrary, but they match somewhat well with the septic's management program of the township. So if you just tilt this map, you can see that that area matches our area through here. This would be area 2, this would be our area 1 down here. This slide talks about the results of 2014. Again, we did what we call focused inspections of all three areas. We did historical hotspot sampling where results were high in the past. And we sampled for fecal coliform, which is an indicator parameter of possibly a failing septic systems. And that's what we've been sampling for all these years. As you can see, in area 1, we sampled nine locations. Area 2, only two. In area 3, we sampled at eight outfalls. So these, again, these are outfalls in our hotspot areas that had flow during dry weather inspections. We also sampled for detergents at one location in area 3. Last year, we did data review and we completed detailed mapping of all the areas. That's a requirement of the DEP and that is now complete. We've prepared a detailed CAD map. And also, we assist the township with their annual reporting requirements to the DEP. And the report for 2013 year went out last year in June. And that's just an example, the detailed mapping. You can see just, that's one area of the township. And then zoom in, you see lots of symbols. And if you look on the website, you can see the presentation, you can see all the symbols. We detail every catch basin and outfall and receiving waters. A little more detail of area 1. We collected nine samples. Four of those samples had fecal coliform greater than what we call 300 colonies for 100 milliliters. Basically, if there is no set standard per se, drinking water standards would be, one would be unacceptable, I believe.
Right. Sewage treatment plants are allowed to discharge up to 200.
200, yeah, the outfalls. Basically, we try to look at anything greater than a couple hundred as being an area to keep an eye on and keep going back in the sampling. Maximum fecal coliform was greater than 6,000. Basically, that's laboratory's way of saying there was almost too many bacteria to count on the plate. So that's a definite area of concern when we get results like that. In area 2, we only collected two samples. Maximum was 670. So really not bad, too bad overall. Area 3, we collected eight samples. Half of those were over 300 and the maximum fecal coliform was over 6,000. So again, another area of concern. We did sample for the detergents in this area and the results came up positive. So that's something we will continue to look into. So an overall summary of the sampling for 2014. Area 1, fecal coliform levels showed some increased results compared to the previous year. Last year, we had a max in that area of only 1,000. This year, we had a max of greater than 6,000 and most of our samples were greater than our baseline of 200. Area 2, we only collected the two samples. Again, not too bad there. The max was only 670. Area 3, elevated levels were seen in several areas and again, a max of well over 6,000. Going forward for this year, 2015, we'll again, complete inspections, May-June timeframe. We typically hit 20 to 25 locations. We still go and inspect it, we just may not sample that many. The other things we can do, and it's based on the results, like seeing detergents or getting high fecal results, we can do dye tracing, which we've done in the past. We'll get in touch with the township and we'll discuss a certain area that may be of concern. And we'll submit letters to, excuse me, frog in my throat. Excuse me. We'll submit letters to residents to do dye tracing of their septic system and we'll put a dye in their system and see if it comes out to the street outfalls. We've done that in the past and we might do that again this year. We did three residents, or we mailed letters to three residents last year, did sampling at two of them. They both came up negative, so we've passed those results back to the township as well. We can also do TV inspections of catch basins to see if there's any kind of illegal hookups from homes or unknown hookups that the residents aren't aware of. We've done that in the past as well and we've mitigated. One case, we did find a hookup, right?
Yep.
And we told the township and the health department was notified and they came out and sealed that up and that outfall started cleaning up much better. Going forward, also the DEP, they're going to be changing the permits. There could be some rule changes coming about. Russ, are you signed up for that class, I believe? Are you going to take that training?
I'd like to.
Okay. There's a training, I think, later this month or next month to talk about maybe some of the permit changes for the next couple of years. They may start doing some other things where we got analyzed for different nutrients like nitrogen and total solids in the waterways to clean those up. That requirement won't come out until 2018. Another possible investigation tool we have is DNA testing. So basically, when we get results of fecal coliform, we don't know if it's from geese or septic systems from humans or dogs. And there's some areas where we're looking into doing possible DNA testing. It's a little more expensive, but otherwise, we're just continuing to monitor. This may rule something in or rule something out. The picture there just shows that they can actually separate the results from seagulls, dogs, humans, cows, deer. I think they do a lot of that. So that's something we're looking into doing this year, possibly. The takeaways from the IDDE program, township remains in compliance. We'll continue to do inspections and sampling of all three areas at the hotspots. Our mapping effort is complete. We'll continue to perform sampling where discharges may be occurring. Sometimes the township will give us a call on the fly to go somewhere and sample. Septic system maintenance is a part of this. As you saw that septic management map, we've seen some correlations, some areas get better right after that cycle for that area was completed. And again, it's about public participation, people maintaining the waterways, not throwing things down those catch basins in the streets. So it's pollution prevention. And the overall goal is obviously to improve the water quality of the watershed. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
You had, you were talking about letters to the residents.
Yes.
How do you determine that you sent less residents than you did of samples that were taken that were high? So how do you? So how do you determine which complaint or which sample gets a letter?
Okay, I'll take this one because I'm the guy that goes out in the field and does the work. When I go out there, I go to, especially now that we have done the township for so many, I know which outfalls have historically been hotspots. We go out to the hotspots, we collect our samples. We have tried TV-ing the catch basins up and down there, looking for illegal hookups from the homeowners and stuff. We haven't found, even if, I'm not even 100% sure they were illegal hookups. We did find some four-inch PVC pipes coming in there and that sort of thing. This was several years ago. And we did send out letters to the homeowners where these pipes appeared to be coming out of their front yards to do dye tracing. Most of these, we can't really tell, you know, where this stuff is coming from, but I'm going to use one example. A new one that I just found this past year is off a lime kiln pipe near Windy Way Lane. And when I traced the catch basin upstream, out of the one homeowner's yard, there is a large pipe going into that catch basin, and then there is a two-inch PVC pipe going into that larger pipe and discharging somewhere further down where I can't see the end of it. So basically, I look at the contour around there and say, okay, anybody that could be feeding into this outfall, you know, or in this contour, once you get over the knoll of the hill, the water's going to flow the other way, shouldn't be coming there. And that's how we choose the homeowners then to try to figure out where that pipe might be coming from, because that's one, he's talking, we checked for the soap suds, the MBNA this year, and we did get a hit there on that, and we also did have a very high fecal coliform there. Now, there was only three homeowners in that area, you know, based on the topography. Two of them got back to us and allowed us to go in and do the dye tracing, which I did. And then we go back periodically throughout that day and into the next day and look and see if our colored dyes show up there. Neither one of those houses did. The third one, we never did get a reply from that homeowner. And again, it's one of these deals where we don't have the authority to actually go in somebody's house. But what my thinking on, there's a few other places in the township, exactly the same way with this. My thinking is, is they have a connection in their basement somewhere for like their laundry, their washing machines, that sort of thing, that could be going out, that two-inch pipe. They probably don't even know it's illegal, but we can't go in their house to actually trace all their hookups to see if, you know, who's actually hooked into there. I put the dye in the toilet, I flushed the toilet a half dozen times, goes out to their septic system, and then we sit there, and like I said, we wait. So we don't send these letters out to too many residents, but the ones that we do, there was one down, oh, what's that little town down there, Edison or whatever? That one, we did find, I mean, I flushed the toilet, and in five minutes, the green water was coming out in the catch basin there. There was no doubt in my mind on that one. So again, it's one of these things where our arms kind of tied as to, you know, how much we can actually go in and do, but we do try, you know, if we have a suspect house or houses in the area, we will ask for permission to go in and dye trace. And like I said, most of them probably don't even know it's an illegal hookup, it was just done years ago, maybe even before they bought the house, to divert some of the water from the septic systems.
So if we suspect something and a resident says no, I mean, we're, we can report with the Board of Health, which we've done.
Right.
They have full authority to go in and do a complete inspection, so.
Right, the Board of Health does.
Am I right, Stephanie?
Yes, we turn them over to the Board of Health.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm sorry.
One other one. If a resident wants to know that they're, if they live around some of these, they want to know it's clean, how do they go about finding that out?
The outfalls themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
We have on our map, which the township has, and it should be even on their website, there should be a map that shows the outfalls. All they need to do is find their street on that map, look at the outfall numbers that are in there, and then.
They have to contact the township. We don't show the results on the presentation.
How do they know the results?
Okay, well, then, okay, well, then they'll have to contact.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but you have everything, you know, I'm just going to say, outfall 035, you know, we have several years' worth of data on that one that they can find their street, and if that happens to be an outfall near their house or something.
Yeah, they can find out. We don't show in the presentation anywhere. We don't want to, you know, throw anybody under the bus or anything.
And if they don't want to contact, again, our name and email addresses are up there. If a town, you know, a resident wants to contact us directly, I can't, you know, give them the information necessarily that same day, but I can get them the information within a day or two, you know, to let them know what the outfall by their house is like.
Thank you. That'd be very helpful. Anybody else? Joe, you have to take the microphone.
My name's Joe Patonostro, Houck Road. Just to be obnoxious like usual, why can't you just lock the pipe if they won't let you inspect? They'll back up, and eventually, somebody will complain.
Unfortunately, that's out of our, we can't, and actually, the township can't, but again, this pipe, if, like I said, I can't see the actual end of it discharging to know that that's where the soap suds were coming from at that one location. But if I did, that's when we would notify the health department, and the health department has the legal right to come. That's what they did at the one location that I said dye came out in five minutes into the catch basin. They came out and they put a plug in that four-inch pipe that discharged into the, and then it started leaking around that, so they had to come out and actually grout the rest of the catch basin to stop the water from bubbling in through the cracks in the catch basin. But the health department actually did exactly what you said. They came and they put a plug in the end of that pipe.
Appreciate your.
That's it? No, God.
All right, any visitor or public comment tonight? Ernie?
Is there a comment there?
Please. Yeah, or Ed will come out and smack me.
Hi, my name's Ernie Gash from 15 Wilkshire Road. Excuse me. I haven't been here for a while because of a number of other activities. I have four comments I'd like to make right now. Number one, can we still drop Christmas trees off? This is information from me.
The 15th, February 15th was the deadline.
Okay, that's good enough. I just want to know, I don't want to break any law, okay? The second thing is, I think that the roads department should definitely be commented on the way they handled the snow and ice around.
Good comment?
A good comment.
See?
And then, the only thing I would like to know, and I won't know until the snow's all off, I don't know whether it came from their trucks or whether it's my lawn, but the one in the front of my house is beat up pretty bad.
Your yard?
My yard, yeah. So I don't know, you know, what happened there. Also, I know is my son used to drive the snow things for some of the concerns that did the townships and around here, and there's a certain amount of liability. It's my responsibility, I'll do that, and there's no problem there. Okay, and then the fourth, or the last comment I'd like to just mention is that I've been coming to these meetings a long time, and what I saw tonight with the two young groups comes back to what the township has been doing for many years. Because I've been taught now for 17 years, and I was teaching at CBEAST. I used to bring my students here in the spring, which was always bringing young people into the meetings. And I'll never forget, Stephanie was the assistant manager at that time, and there was a big court case coming in about property up at the shrine and Connie and everything else, and Connie was on, the head of the board here, I think it was. And we were sitting in the back, and when it came, stopped, he went down, and then they let the students ask a couple of questions. And I'll never forget, the one boy was from Warrington, and he raised his hand and he said, "The big issue was, were they going to make them do all the project or part of it?" And he stood up and he just said, "I don't know all these things you're talking about, but we're in economically hard times. Why don't you let them do a few? And if they are successful, they can finish them, and if they don't make out, then they haven't messed up the whole area." And the supervisor immediately went on that.
How about it?
And changed it. I mean, it was just unbelievable. And the only thing I can say, it's only the one girl here still, but, you know, where you're going now, you'll be one of the leaders later on. And that's all, thanks.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Keith?
I had Mr. Gash as one of my teachers at Central Bucks East, so I'm not young anymore, but I think we were taught very well, so. I'm here to talk about the amphitheater. And basically, I want to address the concern that, I heard the presentation at the meeting, last meeting, that there's going to be bathroom, there may be bathrooms there and a dressing room and so forth. And I'm wondering, okay, it seems duplicative of an amphitheater having a bathroom and a bathroom building being built across the walkway and bathrooms being added to Kids Castle. How many bathrooms are we going to have in Central Park to be added in that quadrant area by Kids Castle? I'm going to reiterate again that I think, you know, we're going to have an additional building, maybe the amphitheater isn't appropriate for that spot in Kids Castle or in Central Park. And the comment that this is going to replace the van shell or the portable thing, and I think that that's irresponsibly incorrect in the sense that it's not either or, it's both. There's going to be an amphitheater and there's going to be a mobile van shell. And maybe not now, but wait for the other shoe to drop, if it's going to happen. I'm wondering why there hasn't been any consideration of Turk II or Turk III for the amphitheater when there's greater parking over there, and that area is in sore need of a bathroom or buildings. And to get on Ernie's point with the student from Warrington, there's going to be less income in the township, and the township needs to be aware of the fact that undergoing these building campaigns, even though the amphitheater is paid for, maybe we should figure out where it is most appropriate for the township. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Any other comments? All right, moving on then to announcements. This next board will meet on March 3rd at 4:00. We're changing times for the board meetings on occasion. They have been published, but the next meeting of the board is March 3rd at 4:00 p.m. Ski tickets are available, so you can get them through the administrative offices. And the Red Cross Winter Blood Drive is Friday, March 27th, here at 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Activity Center. Next item on the agenda is approval for the minutes of February 3rd. Is there a motion to approve? A motion to approve?
I have one correction.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, corrections?
It's just on page two. We stated, I said, "To have the Order of Americans Act to be passed." We were asking residents to call their representatives to have the Older Americans Act to be passed. That's all. And they still want them to do that.
Spelling correction.
Spelling correction. It's not a big deal, but they still want them to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stating Mr. Colletlo. All right, correspondence, Drager Property.
Yes, we received a letter from the Heritage Conservancy, and.
We've all received, you all got a copy of it?
It was in the packet. And Taylor is here from the Conservancy this evening, along with the Drager's Children's, Mrs. Rowan. Welcome.
Okay.
This is a property on Lower State Knoll House, just next door to Delaware Valley College. If you head out Lower State Road, you come to the stop sign at Cattie Valley Bridge there. Their property is the beautiful property on the right-hand side. It's a property that our open space committee had approached the mine several times when their parents were alive. And at the time, it just wasn't, you know, the right time for the parents to put it into conservation easement. But unfortunately, now their parents are gone, and the children want to preserve the property. And as the board knows, we've utilized our allocation through the county open space program, but I put them in touch with the Heritage Conservancy. And the Heritage Conservancy has a program, it's the 1772 Foundation, that would help them purchase the conservation easement for the farm and also preserve a lot of the historic structures on the farmhouse and the barn building itself. They are looking for the township to help partner with them, and specifically, the request is that we fund for $1,900 the Indian Valley appraisal that needs to be accomplished in order for them to make the application to the 1772 Foundation. And it would certainly be my recommendation to the board that we consider doing that and help them preserve this beautiful property in the township.
Does anyone care to put that in the form of a motion?
I'd like to make that motion, that we approve the appraisal fee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
It says in the letter that they need help with appraisal, survey, and settlement fees. Are they just asking for $1,900 and that's it? Or are we still going to be asked for survey and settlement fees?
I've only been talking to Taylor about the $1,900 at this time. There was not any, and she hadn't provided any other additional funds.
Taylor, you want to come on up? Clarify that.
Hello. So we're working to get the 1772 grant, and hopefully, they'll be able to cover these costs. We also have an application in, at Rich Harvey at the, for the Bucks County Ag Preservation Board. And so if we get some funding from there as well, we'll be able to cover those costs. I guess we'll, it'll be, we'll have to wait and see where we can get these fundings.
But for now, you're asking for the appraisal fee?
Just the appraisal, just to get the ball rolling.
And you may be back to us, but we'll, hopefully not.
Hopefully not, but perhaps.
Do these grants pay us, you know, back for the appraisal fee? Is that in the grant?
The 1772 grant is pretty much just the cost of the easement itself. And they also looked for other partners, such as the Doylestown Township. So it wouldn't be, like a refund.
No refund.
Sorry.
But you have to have the appraisal in order to submit the application.
Yep.
I mean, I'm just speaking out loud. I mean, this is a, I just don't want to get on the hook.
Understood, yeah.
Coming back for the other fees, and then we're on the hook. And I was hoping you would just say, this is it, we'll never, you won't come back again, but that's not what you're telling.
As far as that, we are definitely hoping to get funding from the Bucks County. We can always, if we get funding through them, we'll be able to give you money back, hopefully.
What portion is the Conservancy contributing?
What, sorry.
What amount is the Conservancy contributing? What are they providing?
Well, we have, William Penn Foundation is our large funder as of now, so we are, I guess, giving our staff time and other services, but I can, I don't think we're able to do that. And I can check with you or check with my supervisor as far as.
My understanding is that with the Conservancy, they're more facilitator rather than the actual funder, correct?
Yes.
And to Mr. Colletlo's point, while you hope to get the other funding through the county or another program, you can't say for sure you, I know it's not in the plan to come back for anything else, but.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to ask you for more money than we need.
And not to be long-winded, but if you get the 1,900 from us and then are unable to acquire the other funding to complete the preservation efforts, is it then, does it die at that point?
It's always.
I mean, I hope not.
Yeah, definitely hope not, but there is also other rounds that we can hopefully try next year, or if there's, if ours is outcompeted this year, then hopefully.
If it doesn't rank high, yeah.
Yeah, we'll always keep trying.
Why would you need a survey? If it's going to be insured with title insurance, and they insure the meets and bounds description from the last eat, why do you need a survey? Because that's going to be a lot, that's going to be more money than the title insurance to insure the easement.
These are just things that we need to, I guess, make sure that we are up to snuff for our accreditation.
I don't know that you need a survey, but we can discuss that later.
Yeah.
With need be.
That's pretty much just how we do things.
They might not, I'm sorry to jump in here, they may not be preserving, quote unquote, like they need to do the survey because of billing envelopes and such, might be precluded from the easement, correct? So that might be justifying the.
And I'm sure due to the 202 bypass, some of these, I'm sure a survey has recently been done. I can check with that for you. But, yeah, it would pretty much be for the minimum boundary areas.
But your request in the letter indicates that you're hoping that we would consider funding the, just the appraisal.
Just the appraisal, as of, yeah.
Right. But if you do, you know, I mean, I guess the question would be if the board wanted to make it, you know, that if you.
Well, there's no reason to make a contingent because it would not be necessary.
Right, if they don't.
And you can preserve how many acres. you can preserve how many acres for $1,900, I don't know why you wouldn't yet.
Well, the Conservancy is asking for $1,900 for the appraisal fee. There's a motion and there's a second. Is there a second? Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 All right, you're good to go. In other words, you're good to go, but don't come back.
Unless you're desperate.
Unless you absolutely have to.
Good luck.
But do keep us posted because we, it is township property, you are located within our, we would love to see it preserved. And despite the, you know, the questions here, we're supportive of it. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts and we appreciate your conservation approach here. All right, next item on the agenda. All right, is there anything else from you?
Not until later.
Manager?
Solicitor? Nothing to report.
Police chief?
Yes. I'd just like to point out some recent updates to our website.
Okay.
I think the residents might find beneficial if we can get it going here. They told me it was going to be up and running.
It's like show and tell, everybody's great at telling. Animation.
So long.
Did you have a little short spot? Oop, got to spell it right. All right, a couple of things that I've added here that the residents might be able to find useful is at the top ribbon bar here, it's hot news. And it's a link that we can go to either there or also down the left side of the menu is the, also the same link. Basically, you can take that to it and you'll get a couple of dropdowns. We've had questions come in lately about scams and fraud, so I kind of went out and did some little bit of research. And basically, the types of phone scams you can get here are listed with some information that the residents can go out to and find out how to prevent themselves becoming victims. Because these types of phone scams that are going out there are very difficult to investigate and a lot of times they go unsolved and then the victim is out substantial amounts of money. The other thing that's listed on here is the U.S. Census is out currently conducting canvases throughout Bucks County. So if you do get somebody coming to your door, the important thing here is to realize that you should have gotten a letter in advance that they're going to be coming out canvassing you. So if somebody comes, you should have received a letter. They're supposed to bring a copy of that letter with you, with them when they come to canvas your thing and they are exempt from our soliciting ordinance. So if they come, they won't have any IDs from the township. The other interesting thing I put out here is a lot of the information, like what we call blotter information. And basically, there's a bunch of dropdowns in here you can go through and if there's a pertinent press release that we put out, you can click on there. I put the, double added the scam part in there. Criminal arrests, you can go through here and there's a report for the whole month of January of any criminal arrests we have. I will leave them up there for two months and then they'll be recycled out there. There's certain information on there. You can click on each one of these and you're going to have basically PDF files. This is the most recent one I did on last week, February 9th through February 15th, and it's by day. It lists the type of offense, fraud that occurred on State Street, whether or not there was an arrest over here to the right-hand column, that type of stuff. So you can go through and see what we're doing on a daily basis for, let's see if I can get back here. Criminal, general related service calls as well as traffic. The other one I'd like to point out is our ordinance tab we have here. And I listed, there's several ordinances that have become more relevant or more prevalent to the township as far as complaints and stuff. The most up to recent one is the peddling and soliciting ordinance here or tab lists you can go through here. You can actually download a copy of our complete peddling and soliciting ordinance, which I think was recently changed within the last several months. You can actually download the application if you wish to become a solicitor in a township. Our new soliciting ordinance has a no solicitation clause where you can actually have your residents listed on there and the solicitors should not be coming to your house if you're on this list. You can actually go on, if you keep going down here, there's a link. You can actually see it lists of residents that are currently registered. It lists them by street and house number. So if your house is on here, the solicitors know not to come knocking at your door. There's also a link on there, if I can get back to it, to electronically add yourself to that list. You can click here and it takes you to a form, where is it? Let's go.
Need your glasses?
It's above here. Click here to register your address on the solicitation list. It basically pops up, it's a form you can fill out online, hit submit and it comes to the township and we'll add your name to that list. Important thing to know about the solicitation list, it runs from January 1st of every year to December 31st of each year. So come January 1st of each year you want to re-register, otherwise it gets wiped clean because we, the, there's a little bit of conversation about how to manage that and this is going to be the easiest way to manage it. If you registered late at the end of last year, I was kind enough to roll you into this year so you don't have to redo it. Mr. Colletlo, you'll have to do it again next year.
Thank you, Chief.
I think that's kind of the key highlights. I mean, there's obviously with the information age out there, there's a lot of information I tried to put out here. Oh, here's the other one. This is, you don't want to see your name on here.
Uh-oh.
But we do have a list. There's currently one, two, three, four, five criminal warrants out there for individuals listed here. As you can see up here, you can actually click, send anonymous information if you know where any of these people are located. We would appreciate your help in locating them so that we can clear out this list. We'd like to keep it to zero. Unfortunately, we can't. And if you click on the name...
Are they residents or are they just people we know are in the area?
These are people that committed crimes in Doylestown Township, not necessarily township residents.
Your warrants, right, Chief?
They are our warrants. And if we had a photograph, the picture would be in there. It's basically the name, the date of birth, the crime, the date the warrant was issued and whether or not we have a photograph. Let's come, some of the highlights have been added since our website came online. It was about a year ago we had this updated. So, and we try to keep it up to date, try to keep it as clean as possible. Anybody has any questions at any time or they would like to see something else added to the police website that I can actually, I don't want to put too much information on it because if it becomes too cluttered, people just won't read it.
Criminal complaints above, not like speeding tickets.
Speeding tickets do not show up there.
Clear bar.
But names of people receiving citations don't show up. The actual stop will.
And to, credit to the chief, I received a communication from a resident just earlier this week, no, end of last week, for a telephone scam. He was, it was a fraudulent call and he didn't know what to do. He detailed the conversation and, you know, the time and all that, forwarded it to the chief and it went up on the website right away. It was right there. So other residents, senior residents could be alerted to this particular telephone scam. So thanks, chief. We jumped on that and it was very helpful. Resident was very impressed and very appreciative. All right, anything else, chief?
That's it.
Manager, I mean township engineer?
Nothing this evening.
Manager?
I just have one thing. I sent her an email Friday after the packet and I apologize for that, but the Green Light Go project for Swamp Road, Easton and Old Easton Roads. The Green Light Go is similar to the red light program. This is a 50% matching program and this is an intersection that is a critical corridor. So we believe PennDOT may consider funding it. The project, we've been working with Panionian, is $193,400. The 50% match would be $96,700. I did review it with Mr. Wallace, our finance director, and he believes that if we rewarded the grant, that we wouldn't know till later in the spring of this year, that expenditures wouldn't occur until 2016. PennDOT will be handling all of the engineering, the bidding, the construction and the expense.
With Swamp Road and Edison Road?
313, 611, like the Enterprise Run car Thompson there and then the intersection behind at Old Easton.
That's terrible.
Back of the old Conti's Restaurant.
Right.
And so, I mean, we have general maintenance.
Why wouldn't we share that with the other municipalities that all can congregate right there? Seriously, why can't we, why don't we do a joint application?
And they share in all the costs when we do make improvements and stuff like that. So we can certainly reach out to them.
Why don't we talk about a 50%? Why don't we talk about, you know, of the match? Thank you.
And we can do that. I just, the application is by the end of the month.
I would get on it then right away tomorrow morning.
I just want to make sure that we can, if you're in favor of...
I'm in favor of them getting involved with the application.
I was at the, this was brought up at our, at the traffic advisory meeting and, and again, it's a, it's a great program, but, you know, again, we, two points, we have to be very cautious of these, these grants because a lot of them are matching grants. So we, you know, we have to put out monies and, but I think this one is easy. There's a bunch of other municipalities that, that should be helping in the cost of this.
Well, there's at least Plumstead and Buckingham or at least Buckingham at a minimum.
Yeah.
So I think before we do that application, we need to have their commitment. I, I mean, I'm going to, I will reach out to, I don't want to decide from the board, but...
And the borough, should be borough and... The borough, in instances, in the borough, I think.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
I can reach out to them as well. Typically, we do share in our signals and maintenance and things like that.
Well, they would have to join and they know that they're going to be contributing a match.
We'll take the lead on the, I mean, I'm happy to take the lead on the application and everything, but if we do receive the grant, certainly get their commitment to participate in the sharing of that.
I think you're not hearing Ms. Mannion. I think Ms. Mannion's position is that we should not be coming up with the match ourselves. It should be everyone sharing in the match.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
The good thing is it's 2016. It's not like you need the money now. So they can plan for it and budget it and try to...
Exactly.
Yeah, as long as we get that commitment from them.
Are we saying we want to go forward if we don't get their commitment?
We haven't said that.
That's what I'm, because she would say the deadline was the end of the...
Well, let's see if we get their commitment and then...
You can decline the grant.
Yeah.
Grant, the grant.
If they, if they don't, okay.
All right, so...
But we could take the lead in terms of writing it in the minute.
So it's a good thing to do, but we think we should have our partners, you know, some partners involved in it.
Just so I understand, you're going to tack contact in Buckingham, Plumstead and the borough and get their participation so that it would be 25, 25, 25, 25. And then you're going to let us know who said yea and who said nay?
Yes. We may not know that by the end of the month, but I, so we can make the application and decline the grant if we don't get their participation after the fact.
Right.
Do you understand?
I understand that.
We would like to have it ahead of time, but we may not have it by time.
I would think that they can give us an answer.
They would have to have their board approve it. Well, you know that what that involves. There are boards and councils. So let's make the effort and then see what happens, okay? So you don't have a...
Well, she's not going to get approval. What did you say it was due?
The end of this month.
The end of this month.
Right, so when are we meeting before then, or...
No, 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 she's going to make the, she's going to make the application.
Oh, I didn't hear it that way. I'm sorry.
And she's putting in the application.
Regardless.
Regardless, because we can decline the grant.
But Stephanie's going to reach out starting tomorrow to the other municipalities and advise that we're, you know, we want to do this, you know, get their participation and hopefully get, we're not going to get their commitment before the end of, before the time this grant is due, but the application is due. Do you understand?
Yeah.
And we actually share that signal, I believe, with just Buckingham, the borough and the township. Plumstead doesn't have a corner there.
All right. So then they can't drive on the road anymore.
They're going to benefit from it. Everybody in this area knows that's a disastrous intersection.
Yeah. It's another intersectional thing. We have a comment from the residents?
Lee Schwartz, just for clarity, can we make it clear that if no one else chooses to participate, that we will refuse the grant?
No.
Ah, see.
No, because you don't want, you don't want to hamstring a future board. I mean, I don't, I...
I've heard some of the other supervisors concerned.
We can decide then. We don't have to decide tonight.
Hmm, yeah. Okay.
That's good governing. We don't have to make every decision all at one time.
Oh, I agree. But the dissent, when the rightful dissent was the fact that you should invite other municipalities to join in on the cost. And the whole idea was that you didn't like the idea of paying the whole cost. But you're going to say if nobody else chooses to participate, you may still choose to spend that money. Is that what you're saying?
We may, we may choose to do that.
Okay. There's Ways and Means, I object, but I accept what you've told. Thank you.
That's why, that's why we have to wear the big boy pants here. Thanks, thanks, Lee. Where are we at?
Supervisors.
Supervisors. Start with you, Sean?
Okay, thank you. I guess before I report, we can make that motion for appointment for, for our Bike and Hike Committee. I'd like to make a motion that William gets appointed to our vacancy on our Bike and Hike Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Bill?
Welcome aboard. Thank you. And then just two comments. I, two of my committees met since the last Board of Supervisors meeting. This morning, actually, 8:00 a.m. in the snow, we had 12 people turn out for our Bike and Hike Committee, which was pretty impressive even in the snow. We got a little late start, but in any event, today was mainly planning and looking at future projects, two pending or two on the horizon that we've been discussing for a little while. It was the Lower State project, which you'll hear a lot more about. It's a, when we say in the future, it's like a 2016 kind of project. But with connecting, the attempt to connect the Parkway to the Y and the borough along the dangerous, you know, Lower State Road there for runners and such. And the other one is actually Upper State area where the Shammany Greenway ends over to the train station. The other, and that's all from Bike and Hike, the other committee for Park and Rec met. Unfortunately, I could not stay. I have nothing to report for that as my wife went into labor during that meeting.
Wow, sounds likely.
So, yeah, I know, right? And, but happy to report, new baby girl, Caitlin Rose, and everybody's healthy. And I thank, thank you and I thank the township staff and the board and for the flowers and everything and my family thanks you. So that's all I have to say. All good news though. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations. Ken?
Yes, a couple of points. I just wanted to highlight that because we had revised our floodplain ordinance, the township staff had to send out letters to the residents who lived along those floodplains. And when you went to that letter, there was a site that you could go look at that would help you explain what the, what some of the changes you may want to know about. After a couple of residents had looked at this, it wasn't very helpful. So Stephanie was able to make some calls and get a accurate link to the site to say, now this one works. So it was really good. Once you pushed it a little bit more, she was able to get something that was very useful to the residents. So if you went there and looked and it didn't tell you anything, I understand why, but thanks Stephanie for going out and getting something that was very useful for you. The second one is, we had met with the Bucks County Emergency Management Group and talked about their system and how they, what they're putting, what they have in place and what they're going to be putting in place in terms of notifying residents when there's an emergency.[1705.91] they're going to be putting in place in terms of notifying residents when there's an emergency. So we talked to them. We did some good things about it. We need some more discussions. But it is something that we're evaluating to see if it is something that we can utilize within, within the Township. But it was, it was a good meeting. The third one is on our budget, and this is mainly for 2016. Going through the budget for the first time last year for the 20, this year's budget, the timing is such that it's after, it's, it's in August when we basically start to, start pulling numbers together and you have a couple of meetings and you're kind of rushed to get all this stuff done, because this is so much work. What coming, working with the Ways and Means Committee and with the Township staff, what we want to do is start that process much earlier. So what we're going to do is, we want to hold a kickoff meeting for the 2016 budget. April 9th is what we're going to target for, again, to get this moving, to be able to flush out more things, have a deeper understanding of all the issues, and hopefully it will make 2016 budget process even better, so.
So this April 9th meeting is either the meeting of the Ways and Means Committee that you're inviting the board to?
No.
Or is it a board meeting?
No, this would, this would be just a, a budget meeting, similar like we had, we had budget working meetings.
The work sessions?
The work sessions, yes.
Of the board? So it'd be an advertised meeting of the board?
Yeah. Yeah, and while the Ways and Means Committee would be there and, and the Township staff, it's like the work sessions we had last year.
Oh, I know, I know. Just, but a lot of times Ways and Means hold the meetings and then the board attends. Okay.
No.
So what, that's a, that's a Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
And, and what time are you thinking?
What do you think, Lee? Any five?
I think that was on day, late afternoon, good.
How about four o'clock?
Four o'clock? That's fine.
Because the staff is still here and...
Yeah, that's perfect, yeah.
Okay. Four o'clock, April 9th. We'll start at that. Kickoff budget. Perfect. I will be in Florida, however. So you'll have it without me.
Okay. You can have it in Florida.
I will. If you're, if you're videoing it, I will stream it. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Ken, thank you. Rick, welcome back.
Oh, it's good to be back.
You stay in.
No. First, I'd like to thank the chief for grandfathering me and my neighbors in for early December entries. And in all seriousness, it's a great, great website. Go to the Township website, go to the police website, you'll find out a lot of information. Very, very well done. And, and I encourage you to do that. The second thing is, next Monday night is my, is our Planning Commission meeting. And on the agenda is the 313 and Furry Road across from a complex there. I mean, it's one of, it used to be...
The old Ann Bailey's.
Ann Bailey's bridal shop. I don't know if that, if you remember what that is. But then there's the, the tiny place, the Roman Delight. Anyway, that intersection, they're going to come in and do their first presentation to the Planning Commission. Next Monday, 7:00, you get the first look at what they're proposing. And last, but certainly not least, it's, it's really good to come home and I, I read all the papers that, while I was away. And it was interesting, and not interesting, it was very good to see one of our, our staff members written up in the letters to the editor column. It was a fire in, New Britain. And Rick Shea, our fire marshal, is a neighbor. And the family wrote, "Thank you, Rick Shea, our neighbor and a volunteer firefighter. He was the first on the scene and assisted my husband, son, and mother-in-law out of the house." So even when they're not here, they're dedicated community workers, so thanks, Rick Shea.
Thanks.
That's all.
Thanks, Rick. Ryan?
Just two committee meetings. Again, talk, the, the Traffic Advisory Committee, we had a good meeting and, and again, we discussed the Greenlight Go program, which we just talked about. And then we also had a good TAB meeting and, and had some outside people that came in outside of the, the actual committee, which was great, and had a resident who brought some, I thought, really neat ideas. And I think there's a lot happening with TAB in the coming year that's really exciting. The, let me say this right, Senior Aging...
Senior or Regional Aging Passport.
You said it. Yes. They met, and they did, they have a, a format this year where they're, where we're videotaping. So we got our first look at, as Ed said, you know, a Charlie Rose-type interview session with Kevin Jamison. And it was really, it was really well done, and I think it was really interesting, and I think it's a great format going forward. So lots of good stuff, talking about some new programming, and, yeah, it's going to be good stuff.
Well, good, thanks. I have just a, I received a communication from a resident regarding his taxes. Now, we had an issue with somebody in taxes the last meeting, I believe. And so I, it was a question, he got it late, but he didn't, it's, anyway. So I sent the inquiry to our tax collector, your input, please, and she did input. So I, my, since the letter, the complaint or whatever from the resident was directed to me, I think I have to respond. You know, this is a tax collector issue, please take your issue to the tax collector. So I just wanted to advise you that I've got that, and I think it's appropriate that we not get involved in, in whether he got the bill or not got, get the bill, and that the tax collector addressed it. That's her, Bailey Wick. Is it all right with that?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. That's all I have, and thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business, the band shell update. Yes. All right, so Dick did this memo. Now...
I don't know if you all got it, copy?
Yeah, the memo says that the capital count has $150,000 allocated for this, and the itemized budgeting totals like $136,000. Is that how I, is that what I'm reading here? Thank you.
And it would be our recommendation this evening, and Dick's going to go through his memo as well as the little drawing that he put together of how it could look for the board. But our recommendation, as you heard from John Bray at the last meeting, would be that we would make the purchase of the prefab structure.
And install it.
And install it, yes.
And it's at the, this is at the location that you outlined for those?
Yes. That John put up in his presentation.
And does this, does this sink, you, Dick, at some point, you said you, you might sink the, the shell down into the ground so that it would not be as tall?
Where we are with the shell is that it basically will be, the floor of the shell will be at the same level as the existing concrete pad that stood under the showmobile for all these years. So basically, ground level at the very top of the grade. However, do I have a pointer, Sam?
Yeah, right by the...
There, I see that. Okay. So if we can follow along with the plan, and this be the actual shell stage right here, a dressing room on the side and a storage room. Right in this sort of, what I had anticipated being red is looking very brown right now, would have been the walkway across the front of the stage at the same level as the stage, but directly in front of that, before you get to the circular area, the ground will drop off about 18 inches. So there will be a definite delineation between where somebody from the audience is standing and somebody that's on the stage. Other than that, this should come pretty much in on grade in the outer edges, although there will be some movement of some soils here. And it will slope up sort of in this area and also on this side. So those are the only grade changes. Mario's done a lot of work on the site, so he knows we need to do a little drainage work approximately in front of this area to this catch basin, at which point it goes across to the big detention basin on the other side of the walkway to the castle. It had been requested that this area would end up being perhaps a refined concrete with some type of a pattern in it. Don't know what that is just yet. Very similar to what's out in our game grove. This area, I've not done anything, but you can see the black line both sides. This was in Mario's plan, proposed as a access point to this, what I'm calling sort of the audience participation area, would lead to that. And at some point in the future, I would expect these to win because we need a handicapped access to this area. And I thought maybe that might make the promenade rather interesting to come down here for seniors that perhaps need a more firm area to walk on than grass. So the area up here for the audience is basically a dance floor, so to speak, and it could be an area where seniors could sit in some level chairs rather than up on the amphitheater In the back, we have an access drive for trucks to back into the stage area where they can unload their equipment. And we anticipated using the existing concrete pad that's there, adding some sidewalks around the side and across from the stage, which might end up in a red brick pattern to be used to, for raising funds through the sale of bricks. So that's under some discussion, I understand. We have added some more trees in this area and some screening in the form of some shrubbery around the band shell area itself in the back. Having said all that, I also gave you a memo on the, what I anticipate to be the cost. And we have a budget of $150,000. I anticipate the cost for the plans, for the construction plans were $4,800. We did buy those. And the balance left for the band shell itself was $52,000. If we move forward with the other facilities that have been requested, such as a bathroom, we obviously need some electrical work for the work lights, stage lights, amplification systems, perhaps the promenade, and some landscape needs, a total just under $80,000 for a total not to exceed of $136,000. I do expect it to come in well under that, but that's sort of my working cost to you folks, so you know what you're spending. And I think that was pretty much it. We decided to leave the band shell in the area where we've always had the showmobile. The amphitheater is in that whole area. The acoustics are good. There's no use going out trying to build an amphitheater when it's a, quite a well-used and, and well-liked and perfect natural amphitheater. So that's why it's been proposed to leave the band shell there.
Did you hear Mr. Peters' question on the bathrooms? Did you give a, can you count the bathrooms that are planned for down there?
Well, really, in, in the band shell area itself, I would think we probably have either a unisex bathroom or a, two of them at the most.
For the cast.
For, for the cast. If anything that you're talking about...
It's not open to public.
There's something else. I'm sorry?
It's not a public bathroom?
No. No. There was, I think you were referencing some other bathrooms that were proposed for Kids Castle, which would be on the other side of the pathway, probably in this area where the basin is. But that's a different project, so. What we're looking at is just the band shell area, storage room, and a dressing room.
And where would the bathroom go if it...
This bathroom needs to get to a point, roughly just follow this kind of across the park, just, just opposite the children's statue, there is a lift station over there near the public workshop. And we need to tack into that.
No, no, where would the bathroom go on the shell?
On the shell, right?
Well, we know inside one of the dressing rooms. Sounds likely on that side.
Probably one on the closer side.
Toilet and sink for the person in the group.
We'd, we have water, you know, probably 150 feet away down at Kids Castle, we can get up there. And we do have a power source, so.
Okay, so the proposal...
Site lends itself very well.
Yeah, the proposal from this administration and the park board was to go ahead with the purchase and construction or installation of the band shell. So you have all the information ahead of, in, in front of you. Is, is the board, you know, will entertain a motion to, to go forward with this project if the board is so, so willing?
I have a couple of comments to make if I could. I just, I have to kind of, you know, I didn't, I didn't vote to go forward with the plans because I really still feel like we're missing a big opportunity here with the showmobile and, and having a portable unit. And I think that Keith makes a really good point about, you know, the other shoe dropping. And are we going to be back here in two years saying, well, we've had a lot of requests for having a portable theater in different places, so now we want to come back and get a showmobile? And I just, I mean, I just have, I have concerns about this. Number one, I mean, I, you know, I, I've, I've kind of addressed where I'm coming from with this, but I think to just assume if we build this, we're going to have Zumba classes and plays taking place and, and all of these different things. I mean, these are all things that we could have done with the portable showmobile. There could have, they, we could have had summer play series happening and, and Zumba classes happening. And, and I haven't seen those things happen already, so I don't know where the assumption is, is that these things are going to happen because we build this. And I just, I don't know. I, 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 I think that, you know, I also have a fear for, I, I spoke with the chief about it, just the fact that we're building this large structure in the middle of the park and, you know, I, I can only imagine what's going to happen there on late summer nights. You know, I don't know if there's any plans for cameras or anything to that effect, but I think it's a really open opportunity for kids to be loitering in after hours. I just, I have a lot of reservations about this, so.
Just to comment about your showmobile question, the showmobile needs staff to operate it, and you just can't put on productions without having a production to...
No, I understand that.
And needs staff all the time to open it, operate it, close it up and stuff. Whereas a band shell is like, you know, it's another facility.
But, but the thing is that, that we're saying that we're going to generate all this revenue from different things coming in. I mean, regardless of staff or not, we haven't had interest, as far as I know, there hasn't been interest for, if you guys had this, we would do plays here or run Zumba classes. I think we're just assuming that these things are going to happen, but, you know, I mean, I don't know. Maybe there has been interest, but, but I haven't been told about any, any interest other than the assumption that we think, you know, we may have, generate interest because we have a standing structure.
I, I think that, well, there's been interest in it because there's been interest in it as long as I've been involved in this, in this township, because the joint park and recreation study done in 2007? Yes. 2007, after surveys of this entire community, it was a joint process with the Borough. One of the top three things they wanted in this community was an amphitheater, a place where they can use to stage events. And what I understand from Karen, along discussions with her and some members of the park board, is that there is a need to use, a want for this kind of facility, and it would be used. You know, everyone here is concerned about making money. Personally, I don't care if the thing makes money. I think it's a service that we're providing in addition to a ball field to, to our, to our residents and our community to have this kind of thing. If it makes money, fine, all, all the better. But it's, it's, it's going to be, I think it would be built and, and offered for the community for what the community would want to do with it. And whether that makes us money or not, it doesn't, that's not, that's not my motivating concern here. I think it's just another facility or another amenity to our already terrific parks. Now, there may be, just, we may differ on where it should go, but...
No, I mean, but it also raises the question of when we, we, when this first came to be in terms of voting for the plans going forward, if you remember, there was a gentleman who came up and spoke about the, the ball fields and that they were not maintained properly. And, and Dick, you said, well, I only have a couple guys working them. Well, this is another thing that we're going to have to maintain. So, you know, I think we have to think about before we're putting more resources into another thing, if we can't maintain the ball fields and we're having complaints about that, I would think we need to, we need to come to, you know, get the, everything well-maintained right now that we already have before we bring existing things that, that are going to require additional maintenance.
Right. And one of the things is, is, and John can certainly explain a little further, but at the last Park and Recreation Board meeting, DAA was there with their baseball people, and we had a very, very good dialogue about what, what we're doing there, what we're doing at the Turk Fields, Sowerman, long-term things that they'd like to see done, but would encourage them to do fundraising as well versus what is general maintenance versus sort of major improvements that they would like to see, just like this facility. And one of the things would be that the showmobile that we have now, we would sell it, probably to another municipality, maybe out in Western Pennsylvania or something. And then, as Barbara said, the maintenance on the setup and the takeout and the schlepping the thing around, you know, takes a number of staff people to do that. It's been discussion with Karen and with Dick that the permanent structure would not need as, you know, the people can go into it and would not need that setup that we require. You know, they can bring their own, and we saw it in one of the pictures that John had in his presentation, you know, you got... in his presentation, you know, "I got my guitar and my amp and I'll plug into the thing and, you know, I can, as long as they're scheduled and paid and all that kind of thing, they can walk right into it and be set up." In terms of the loitering and certainly, you know, I think that's one of the reasons we want it in the central portion and the active area of Central Park versus one of the more remote areas, is with that, I mean, we have that issue, and I know what you're going at with kids and everything, we have it in the Kids Castle sometimes, and we certainly have it in the Bird Line.
Right.
And things that we find and things like that there. So, you know, I think having it there, certainly for the, whatever the police department recommends in terms of motion sensors or some sort of lighting, you know, maybe a motion light that comes on, you know, we can certainly work with the chief to address that. But, you know, I think that's important.
Just to kind of summarize some of the things that Ryan was suggesting, I mean, back in November 18th, when we talked about this and approved the $5,000, one of the things we also talked about is what is the plan to grow the business? How do we document that? And, and I know there's a lot of ideas on how we could use it, but that's not a good plan on how you're going to grow the business. So I really, really think that that is important so we can answer these questions. I mean, we haven't had answers to, "Well, what's the borough going to do in the summer? Are we still going to give them the showmobile in the summer for those three or four concerts, whatever it's going to be?" I don't know. So that has never been answered. We talked about, and I've heard it stated a couple times, there will be no current or future tax dollars used for this. Well, we have professional services, the engineers, charging time to the general fund to work on this project. So we are using current tax dollars. And we're going to use in-kind services to build this. Those are tax dollars. And we're also going to maintain it. Those are tax dollars. So I just want to be completely open and transparent that if we're going to use tax dollars, state it. But to say there are not going to be any tax dollars isn't correct, at least in my mind. So I just think we need to, I want to see a more detailed plan, what it's going to cost us, what are those maintenance costs going to be, and what, and just know what we're getting into before we put up the structure. That's, that's what makes me happy.
Go ahead, Dick. Do you want to speak to the cost or anything? If you know?
Well, you're absolutely right. There is maintenance to anything that we do. The question always comes down to, is it a township endeavor? And forgetting that we want to make a profit? This is for the good of the people in the township and a way of life in those towns. I don't have a full answer for you in terms of what that cost would be. Obviously, our people are going to go check it every day, just like we do Kids Castle. It's just part of our daily life. I don't see it for many, many years of being a big issue until such time as perhaps vandalism occurs, then it becomes a big issue. To Ryan's analogy, I would only say it was a little unfair that we do take care of our ball fields.
Oh, I'm not saying that you, I'm just saying...
Well, but I just want to make it clear because we maintain our ball fields to be safe, not to be a shy park or anything like that. So that's...
I'm not, I wasn't, I wasn't implying, I'm saying, when he showed up, he said that the, the ball fields weren't being mowed enough for the kids to play. I mean, he wasn't talking about fundraising and issue. He was talking about maintenance for the kids to play baseball on. And, and you did say, you know, "Well, I only have a couple guys, we're, I mean, we mow them the best we can for you guys to play on them." But my point, and a little bit to what, what Ken's saying, I, I'm, I think we have to look at this as, as, you know, I sat on the Ways and Means Committee last year, and we talked about the idea of we're moving towards, I mean, in terms of transparency, we're moving towards a potential of a tax increase. I don't want to look back and say, and have the residents of our township say, "You guys go and put an amphitheater up and then you raise our taxes." And we're talking about essential services to a township, and amphitheater is not an essential service. It is a wonderful thing. I think it's beautiful. I don't have any problems with where it is or what it looks like. I think it looks like an awesome structure. But I'm not going to be the one that is going to raise taxes because we put an amphitheater up two years prior. I need to make the choice to make essential services, and if we have the money and the funding to be able to do these things, then we do. But, but the way that it looks in our five-year projection, we shouldn't be doing these, these large projects that aren't essential. So that's, that's really, at the end of the day, where I am.
Which is where the money-making aspect of this bandshell comes in.
Right. And if that, if the...
And I have no doubt that this, this, this bandshell will pay for itself. I have no doubt.
But we don't have any, but we don't have anything...
Well, we do have, we do have a pretty good track record in our recreation department. The director of Parks and Rec makes money at all of the programs. I know it's not paying the electric, electric bill here, but it is paying for the department itself. Am I wrong? Karen? Pardon? Don't trip. Jesus.
We charge for every single thing we do, every single amenity. There is nothing that's offered in this township that doesn't have a fee associated with it. Rarely, rarely. There's some, some programs, things that were free, we got rid of. Things like the very, very popular Ag Hon, anything that was free, we got rid of. These are the same concerns that were voiced when the octagonal pavilion went up on the hill, all of them from site disc, from sightline to cost to revenue generation. Things happen over time, and over time, that pavilion, if it's not paid for itself at this point, has come close. It's constantly rented. We look at multiple opportunities in terms of the bandshell as to how that can be, that generated, revenue can be generated back in. But as Mrs. Lyons said, there are also services that we provide, and we provide them to our community, and we do that happily and willingly to make this a better community so that everybody can enjoy themselves. But we, our fee structure is higher or close to as high, our field structure is higher than any other municipality in Central Bucks, or in Bucks County, probably, having talked to my colleagues. So we are high and charged for everything we do to the users that use our facilities.
And when you bring in these fees, what, how are you operating as a result of these fees? Are they paying, are these fees paying for these amenities, or are they helping with the freight costs?
It comes back into, I think of it as like a hub and wheel approach, where the revenue comes in, some things generate more, some things generate less. You've always heard me say I'm a big believer in change adds up in the jar. Change fills in that jar, you have, you have dollars. Some things are lower cost, some things are higher cost, into the hub dispersed back out as it's needed in the different areas.
So what do you think about this bandshell, then? In terms of making, paying for future maintenance and, based on your experience and your work in the township, where do you see the costs of the, being covered from the bandshell?
I, I see it primarily like our pavilions of rental facility for various groups with a lot less of our time involved in it because we can rent it out, yes. Like everything else in the park, I would go around and get spruce up and clean up at the day. I see it as an educational facility. I see it as the potential of as an outdoor classroom. I see it working with the EAC on providing educational opportunities. I perceive it as a facility of an area that we can run programs, potentially increase our program base. It's an outside facility, which is always the bane of our existence. We have very few indoor places to, to offer programs and services. But as Mr. Bray mentioned at the last meeting, it's something that we will push heavily. And we have, as Mrs. Lyons said, we have a very, very good track record over 20 years of providing those services and making very good use of our facilities and our amenities.
I'm Karen. Have you gotten requests for, how do you know that these, this use will occur, these uses will be requested?
I have a special event request right now, wanting to bring in a band. I've had it over the years, I've gotten two contacts tonight from groups wanting to be in our concert series. We have already, we are $2,000 away from meeting our budgetary goal for fundraising for the summer concert series that's been done in the last month. We are increasing the number of concerts from the six that was a question to eight, back to its original, its original number that we had for so many years. We, Stephanie and I met with John Davis and Gary Harris from the borough. We had a lengthy discussion about the bandshell. We had a lengthy discussion, which included their plans and, really not even plans at this point, thought process, if they were to acquire the Pendott property over in the borough, contemplating that. They have no, from what I understood as we left that meeting, they have no issues or concerns with us putting a bandshell in it. They have no issues or concerns about our ability to continue to work together. And if and when their bandshell gazebo, whatever it is they put in, comes to pass, they'll look at that then. They see it more as a, as a Village Green, probably a smaller venue. In the interim, they have no, no qualms about having the concerts as in partnership here.
Okay. Lee? Do you want a question of Karen?
Not a question, I have to Karen.
Okay.
I have a question for Karen.
Well, don't, don't leave it Karen.
I was going to say, before she... Just real quick, to Keith's point, I think you brought up, and I think Ryan, you mentioned about the, referring to like proverbial other shoe to drop, you know, about what, what would happen about, I guess, implying, you know, what we need, still the use for the also the portable. What is, what is the plan?
We would not at any point be requesting to add a new showmobile. Period. We have no interest in maintaining the showmobile that we have now.
Will the showmobile be used this year at all?
If we just, we'd probably try to take it over to the borough, but they're perfectly happy to have the concerts here as well. Obviously, our, one of our goals and what we'd love to see happen, this has been a long time, this has been 20 years in the making. This is not a fly-by-night plan. It is the 20th anniversary of Central Park. It's the 20th anniversary of the concert series. We'd like to kick it off. We have a window of opportunity to order that and get it in the ground. That window is getting short at this point, but Sean, no, we have no plans or interest in having two stages.
Other questions for Karen before she just...
Not Karen.
Okay.
I think one of the things we haven't really brought up, and we haven't really, I know we have a ability...
Do you want a question for Karen?
I don't have a question, just a comment, but it's something Karen and I talked about previously, and we haven't really brought it up and haven't put it out there. But the potential is to, and we've talked about this in the past, naming rights and having someone put their name on that, that facility as well. Obviously, something the board, you know, we have a policy and...
So that would, that would generate income. That would generate income. That's a significant selling...
My question is more for Dick. And just for younger members, Emily and Ernie, Shy Park is what Connie Mack Stadium was called before it became Connie Mack Stadium.
Thank you.
You didn't know that either?
I didn't know that either. Thank you very much.
Hey, but people got to learn their history.
My whole point has been that this is, was raised over 20 years, donated, and that was my main focus when I sat down for an hour or more with Karen. And I, I want to respect that, what happened over the last 20 years and other boards. So I want to respect that. My understanding is using $136,000 for the number. This project will not cost any more than $136,000 to cut the ribbon. If, so this account will be zero the day we cut the ribbon. And if more money is needed, then the Park and Rec has what's, the golf outing and other reserves, those accounts would be down to zero before we cut the ribbon. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that. I didn't quite get it, and then when Ken mentioned about engineering and all that, I can, just, am I understanding it correctly?
Karen's going to, I'm not sure if I'll follow, so. He wants, he wants to make sure everything's going to be done for $136,000.
Everything that we're planning to work on right now is to come in under $136,000, which is performing arts fund. It does, has nothing to do with the other capital fundraising monies from golf, not connected one way or the other.
The fees for the engineers, where are they coming?
Coming out of the $136,000. And this is an ongoing program. Anything that we continue to fundraise...
The general fund, but once we get them all tallied up, we can...
It pulls right, pulls right out of that fund.
So the engineering, this is news to me, so the engineering funds that are being charged today and for the whole term of the project...
Will ultimately come from the money that's already been raised for the project.
Will be part of the $150.
Correct.
And how about, well, the total is $150, but it's the same box. How about the in-kind services? How about the install?
That's, we would look at the township as a function of the township, a function of delivering the amenity to the community.
You're not going to charge back...
Just like Kids Castle.
It's like charging yourself for your own projects.
No, that, my, my, I like to...
I understand what you're asking.
I'm just saying, if we say there's no taxpayers' funds going towards it, well, then there's no in-kind services. If taxpayers are paying for those guys out there doing the work...
Correct.
Then we need, I'm just saying, state it.
Correct.
If it's $50,000, it's $50,000. I don't know what the whole bogey is right now. I have no clue.
Correct. For, for what you're seeing, the engineering, the purchase, all that, staying within the $136,000, if we can, can seek assistance from our staff to provide our amenities, then that would be certainly appreciated. This is a living project, the concert series, the performing arts series. Hopefully, additional monies will be generated into that for future addition. Well, I don't know that we have additions, but in future needs...
Just so you know, just so you know, over the last 20 years, staff has participated in the Performing Arts Council, I mean, the performing, the series. There have been out there. So that has not been charged back. That money, they're not reversed.
But that was setting up the showmobile and stuff.
Well, but they're there all, the whole time.
Kids Castle...
Right. But it wasn't building the showmobile. They're building the amphitheater.
Our staff also built the pavilions, pavilion, the octagonal pavilion, Kids Castle. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. So, yeah.
So man, excuse me, person hours are not, are, will be, will be tax dollars. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
So just for my edification, if Dick's in-kind is $12,000, that's not in $136.
No.
But that should come out of the Park and Rec funds?
Budgeted funds.
Yeah, I don't understand why not.
It's their salary.
It doesn't come out of anything. It's, it's, it's their salary. I mean, whether they're, you know...
It's an activity that takes...
It's classified as tax dollars because it's employee salary. But it doesn't come out of a fund because it's not, it's not actual money.
Part of the, that's part of the function of the daily park services that we provide, whether we're cleaning up or putting in...
We can keep track of the hours just for our edification, what it costs to, or person hours to build this thing, and then we could decide to do what we want to do with it. Okay?
Yep. And as I said, it's a living, it's a living program, so I would certainly anticipate that we would continue to generate funds, proceeds into the fund for future uses.
Thanks, Karen.
Yep.
Okay. Other comments? Lee, you want to come up?
This one you may not expect. From my perspective, I guess I'd like to reiterate the fact that there's restricted funds that have been put aside over the years for this particular project. And I really appreciate how passionately the people have been talking about this. I wish every project that we looked at had this much scrutiny and this much intent to find out exactly what the benefit of the township will be. That being said, the money has been raised over the years. It isn't, is it, it is in a restricted account. And I think all the good questions have been asked and all the concerns have been put forward. I would just request that each future project that we look at, you look at the same way. But I believe at this point, it's probably a good decision to at least put it to a vote. I think the people that have come here passionately to get the thing built probably deserve the answer yes. That would be my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Anybody else from here, from the board? Any other comments from out there? Joe, Paternostro? Well, he had his little finger up first. Go ahead, Joe.
After not being here for a couple of months. I don't mind anything that's going on. I agree with everybody's negative and positive attitudes, but I would like to see part of this motion that under no circumstances will this shell be given away or used at no charge.
No.
You will charge for everything.
Thank you for your comment. I don't know that we... Thank you for your comment. I don't know that we can do that though, but go ahead. John?
I would like to make just a couple of comments. First of all, I think that the park board fundamentally disagrees with any notion that everything we do must have a business plan. I think that when the park was built, there was no business plan. There was intuition on the part of the board of supervisors and some key members of the community. As we move forward with, with the park and various amenities, we have a lot more to work with than the supervisors and the forward-thinking township residents who built the park in the first place. We have the 2007 comprehensive plan. That in a very real sense is our bible. Between that and our master plan for Central Park and as we move forward, perhaps updated master plans for the other parks, we know what we want to do. Karen, I think, was very articulate and very thorough in her comments regarding fees. We don't do very much at all that we don't charge for. Some things we do. Some, we have, we have our concert series. They're free. We raise funds to, to support them. But essentially, they're free to the township residents or greater community residents who come and watch the concerts. We believe that we will be very successful in charging fees for the amphitheater. I've already outlined many of the uses, both current and future, that we, we plan to, to offer or that we believe will, will take place in the amphitheater. We don't have firm numbers for, for potential users moving forward for five years. We don't think that's necessary or appropriate. It is to some degree our, our intuition regarding the, the use of the amphitheater. It's based primarily on our past experience, so it's not just a wild-ass guess. And as I say, we're also guided by our comprehensive plan, our master plan, and an awful lot of community support that we hear about, but unfortunately you don't. So we certainly would encourage you to order, or to vote to order the band shell tonight. Gives us a little bit of wiggle room in terms of getting it built and getting it up and in operation for our 20th anniversary and perhaps some other events that may take place around the same time. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to address that. I'd be happy to address some of the comments made earlier regarding the, the band shell. First of all, the, I think the issue of the bathrooms has been, has been put to rest. We envision just something for the cast members in, in the dressing room. It may include the toilet. It may just be a sink with a dry well. It's not going to be anything sophisticated, certainly nothing open to the public. The, the Kids Castle folks in their third phase envision a concession and/or restroom facility. As Mr. John pointed out, that's across the path. That's not part of this project. It might happen in the future. It's something that's really important, and I think that users of the park would appreciate. Regarding Turk Park, we do not own Turk Park. The folks that, that built the, the dog park knew that when they raised the funds. And there's a certain level of risk associated with, with building any permanent structure there. The park board certainly does not support building the, the band shell in, in Turk Park. The topography is, is not conducive. It would block many of the uses. Having the meeting with the DAA fresh in my mind, we know how heavily it's used. We know what their, what their requests are. And, and I just don't see that being a successful location for the band shell. The security issues, which we've discussed, it's another issue. We really do want it front and center. I apologize if I misled anyone regarding the funding and the tax dollars. It is true that there will be some in-kind services. And if, if that constitutes misleading, then I do apologize. But it is certainly true that the vast majority of the funds necessary to build it are coming from donations and from grants and from other, other revenues that have been raised over the last 20 years. And I think that that amount of money, which is hard to come by these days, speaks to the interest of our community in the band shell and in the performing arts out in the open in an accessible way so that it can very, very, very well be, become a stage for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. John, Emily, can you see your hand up?
Well, she's coming up. Just to respond real quick. You can go up a while. That's right. I understand what you're talking about when you talk about the, the plan for the, the parks and the comprehensive plan. But I do disagree with that you make $150,000 decisions based on intuition. I do believe you need some type of project plan, some financial view, something. But to say it runs on intuition, isn't. Where did you?
That isn't what I said. What I said was, to a certain extent, it's based on intuition. But I said that we have the 2007 comprehensive plan, which was an extensive and expensive plan so that we know exactly what our recreational needs and wants might be. Nothing we can do is going to make our, our, our park a, a core service. It's not the same as police. It's not the same as roads. It never has been and never will be. We have to understand that this is, this is an amenity that adds to our community quality of life. And this augmentation to our park is just another amenity that enhances the quality of the life of people in Doylestown Township and the Central Bucks region.
Emily?
So we're both here from CB Cares.
Can you lower your?
Yeah. From CB Cares and Youth to Community, the music program. And coming from a youth perspective, we've been looking for opportunities to perform on our own without, like director help and everything for so many years. And I think something, a permanent structure like this would really benefit everyone, like in my community, all my friends, a lot of people in our school. I know that there's a ton of different ways that the amphitheater could be used. And I just think it would be an awesome structure to place in.
Yeah, CB Cares is definitely an organization meant to making the community a more positive place, especially the youth part of it throughout Central Bucks. Many students participate, you know, in the music programs and the theater programs. And I'm definitely sure that this would be used, you know, because in youth of community, the music program that many students do throughout Doylestown, we're always looking for more places to perform and to get kids more involved. And that's the whole point of it, is getting kids more involved in the arts and, you know, going out and seeing their friends do positive things instead of negative things on the weekends, just building, building a better quality of life, like you were saying, throughout Doylestown. And students throughout pretty much all Central Bucks schools are involved with this and CB Cares in general. And it's definitely something we support and should, should be noted. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thanks Emily. And, and these Youth to Community events are all adult-sponsored events?
Yes.
Barb, can I just make one more comment? I just, just, I just want, you know, the record to show that I'm, I, I fully appreciate the 20-year plan and the 2007 comprehensive plan for, for our parks. And I believe in putting these types of plans together. But I also just, you have to understand, regardless of if, you know, you put a one-year plan in place, there, there's going to be ebbs and flows to your plan. And I think it's important, when we look at our plan and we come upon a place where it's time to implement something on the plan, we have to be fiscally prudent when, when we're, you know, when we're doing that. So that, that's, I'm not disregarding either of the plans at all. And just, I just want to make that clear.
I have a question maybe for Stephanie. Stephanie, not to put you in a spot, but a simple question, I think, a real short answer, just that, Lee's point from the ways and means regarding the funding and the restrictive funding, you referred to as that, for the people watching or for, I think most of the people on the audience understand what that is, what does that mean? That it can only be used for this project? If it's not, if it's not, if it's not used, what happens to the funds? Those may be questions. When he says that, maybe explain to them.
We have a separate bank account, and all the funds that we raise through the performing arts go into that bank account. Unlike the state liquid fuels account, it's not the same level in terms of illegal, but it is more like Mr. Garten said before, it's a moral issue that we establish that account, we put those funds in that account, and that those don't get commingled with the general fund. It's not used for general fund purposes or anything. Obviously, if it wouldn't go forward, we would either use the funds to just do more concerts or possibly, you know, I don't know how we would go back over 20 years and, you know, quote unquote, give money back to donors, although I know a few of them. I don't know all of them and, you know, finding them and everything might be difficult. But the hope would be that, you know, we would.
But it's a, it's a performing arts account. It's not a, it's not an amphitheater account. That's, that should be clear. Like the money is, was raised.
The money was raised for the, for the amphitheater.
For the programs in the amphitheater.
But the money, the money was, the money's in a performing arts account.
Bank account. That's the name on the bank account.
Okay. Every dollar in there was raised for the amphitheater?
The money also passes through for the concert, costs of concerts for the performers.
Yeah.
Karen, what's that?
Over the years, as we've raised money into performing arts, which has primarily been the summer concert series, Performing Arts Committee years ago, realizing that the showmobile would have a lifespan, decided that there, that any of the proceeds remaining throughout the, either dedicated, either donated towards the, the band shell or proceeds remaining from the summer concert series, they wanted to focus on looking to the future to get that band shell in the ground in accordance with the original master plan, the comp plan, the master plan update, and trying to look prudently way back then at a replacement plan so that they could demonstrate fiscal responsibility, bringing, bringing a project to the table as opposed to just saying, well, we're at this point now, we need, we need $150,000. Can we have it? The intent was and is to come to the table with money raised to demonstrate that fiscal responsibility.
Okay. Where are we?
Was there a motion? Was there a motion or a second?
There's no motion.
All right. We'll entertain a motion to get the band shell approved and up. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we make the purchase of the band shell.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further conversation? Calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nate?
Nate.
All right. Ayes have it. You're good to go. Thank you, everyone. DTMA, future viability of the water system.
I think we need to have an informational session at some time on this topic without having a public discussion about it. So we should think about that in the future.
All right. There was a memo from Mr. John to us, and then the DTMA responded. So I suggest that we get together in an informal way and look at this issue with Mr. John, me, maybe you, the DTMA, and the board.
We should, the board should meet first to understand all the issues associated with.
Which board?
This board.
Yeah.
Before you go to the DTMA.
Okay. So, and do, do you, you recommend that we have an informal session on this?
You can, it's informational, only no decisions will be made. You can do that as a work session. So we have time scheduling. So we can sort of go through and, because I've done similar circumstances previously, so.
All right. Is this something that we, we can do after? Do you, would you like to be there?
Sure.
All right. So we'll, the next meeting, we'll get some dates up, okay? Mr., for, for this informational session. We can do that now. Because this is a little late now. All right?
Yep.
So put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Got it.
Dates for informational DTMA township.
Work session.
Work session. Thank you. All right. Friends of Dog Park. This came up the last meeting. I asked Stephanie to put it on the agenda. We want to, you know, get rid of that committee because we don't need it anymore. The Dog Park finances are functioning, you know, very effectively and efficiently through the township. The money that we're talking about is sitting over in the borough, and they would just as soon get, have it come to, to our coffers over here. So is, so I would make the motion that the original Dog Park Committee, Friends of Doylestown Dog Park, be disbanded.
One second.
Thank you. Any other questions or, any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I used to have advisory committee.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
This is the old committee.
Yeah, this is the original.
And the borough's probably going to do the same thing. Caroline said they would do that too.
Now, next new business, the Kapoor Company proposal regarding the police arbitration. I would enter, ask the board maybe to entertain tabling this if we can, because we're going to be meeting with the PVA reps this week and next week.
And next week.
So can we put this off until our next meeting?
And I think the arbitration, if we have it, has been pushed off anyway, so we have more time.
I would rather not have to make a decision on $16,000 if we don't have to at this point. Thank you.
That's fine.
All right. Treasurer's report for February 17, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for February 17, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, May 3 at seven, excuse me, at 4:00 PM, March.
March 3.
Tuesday, March 3. I knew I was going to get that wrong. Tuesday, March 3, 4:00 PM. Ski tickets, they're available in administrative offices and the Rid Cross Blood Drive Friday, the 27th of March, 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and the Activity Center. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate your time and attention.